All right, let's call to order Town Council Regular Meeting Tuesday, November 19th, 2024. Our invocation will be delivered by Pastor Andre Winters of the Corner Church of Monks Corner.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for letting me pray over tonight. A quick verse from James 4:6 just says that God opposes the proud but gives favor to the humble. C.S. Lewis Wooten wrote, just real fast, "That true humility is not thinking less of yourself, it is thinking of yourself less." Let's pray. King Jesus, thank you for tonight and just a moment to lift up this meeting to you. Lord, I pray over our leadership, Lord, and I thank you for them, Lord, as they just represent this heart of humility, God, as they put all of our community and its needs before themselves. Lord, I pray that you give them wisdom, that you give them favor, God, that you bind their hearts together as one. Lord, I pray for your Spirit and your discernment to be among us, and, God, that you continue to draw all people to yourself, to find just the hope that we're all seeking for in you. Jesus, we praise in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Our pleasure allegiance will be done by Councilwoman Lloyd.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, we're going to have a special presentation from the Monks Corner Police Department. Chief Young, if you'd come up.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I'd like to call up Corporal Logan Armbruster. Corporal Armbruster has only been with us for about seven months now, and he's supervisor over our SRO unit. And even during that short time, he's made significant contributions to our agency and community. And today's award is just a sampling of that. So, we're presenting him with the Emeritus Action Award, and I'll read from it. "Presented to Corporal Logan A. Armbruster in honor of your unflappable composure, rapid assessment, and decisive actions on October 24, 2024. While directing traffic at Fox Bank Elementary School, you were alerted by a frantic mother regarding a critical emergency involving her child who was not breathing in the backseat of her car. Your swift intervention in removing the child from the car seat, administering the hammock maneuver, and promptly calling for medical assistance was instrumental in preserving the child's life. Your deeds illustrate the significant difference that one dedicated officer can make in the lives of those in our community. This award stands as a testament to your unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of our community and reflects the higher standards of the Monks Corner Police Department. We extend our heartfelt gratitude for your heroism." Thank you.
All right, now, at this time, we have a proclamation for Native American Heritage Month. If there's anyone here from the Wasamisaw Tribe of Varnertown Indians, please come up to the front. You can stand right here. This is kind of a long one, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a minute.
It is.
It takes a minute.
All right. Proclamation, "Whereas Native Americans have played a vital role in the life of our state, city, and country with their many contributions enhancing the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of South Carolina, and whereas the Wasamisaw Tribe of Varnertown Indians, a state-recognized sovereign nation based in Berkeley County, has preserved the history, culture, and unique heritage of South Carolina's Native American people. The tribe continues to play an essential role in maintaining their ancestral traditions and enriching the cultural landscape of our town. And whereas the Wasamisaw Tribe, whose ancestors include Etesto, Edawan, Kataba, 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 and the Cherokee Peoples, established a settlement community near Karnes Crossroads and the Wasamisaw Swamp in the late 1700s and have resided there ever since, contributing significantly to the history and development of Berkeley County. And whereas historic Native American Indian missions and schools, including the Pineview Indian School, Barrows Mission, St. Barnabas Mission, Groomsville School, and Varner Indian School, were established to serve the Native Communities, playing a crucial role in educating and supporting Native Peoples in the region. And whereas the Wasamisaw Tribe was historically known as the Somerville Indians and formally acknowledged as such by the Bureau of Indian Affairs in 1977, is among the Native American Communities whose descendants still reside in Berkeley County and across South Carolina today, preserving their legacy and traditions. And whereas the Wasamisaw Tribe has a longstanding engagement with Berkeley County and the Town of Monks Corner, actively participating in discussions on land and cultural preservation and community development to ensure their needs and perspectives are incorporated into local governance. And whereas the Wasamisaw Tribe has contributed significantly to the broader society, notable individuals from the Varnertown Indian Community include Geneva Varner Clark, who boldly proclaimed that her Native heritage during the Great Depression and is the only known Low Country Indian documented in the Library of Congress; Henry Clark, who was the first Native American to register a business in South Carolina; and William and Mary Varner, who generously donated land for schools, businesses, and a church. Their legacy is now commemorated by a state historic marker on the same site, recognizing the contributions of the Varnertown Indian People. And whereas Wasamisaw Tribe members have served with valor and distinction in wartime, and their artistic, entrepreneurial, and cultural contributions have greatly enriched the heritage of Monks Corner and the state as a whole, as evidenced in the cultural classes offered monthly along with the annual cultural festival in Pow Wow held by the tribe each October. And whereas the South Carolina General Assembly has recognized November as National Native American Heritage Month in South Carolina, now therefore I, Thomas Hamilton, Mayor of the Town of Monks Corner, South Carolina, along with my fellow members of the Monks Corner Town Council, do hereby proclaim November 2024 as South Carolina Native American Heritage Month in the Town of Monks Corner and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities that honor the rich heritage and lasting contributions of Native American Communities in our state. Signed, 19th day of November, 2024."
Yes, of course. I'm Geneva Burbage, which is, my grandmother was the first Native American, Geneva Varner Clark. But I would definitely like to say thank you for all your support and dedication with helping to keep our Native American line alive here in Berkeley County in Monks Corner. And of course, a lot of us still reside at Karnes Crossroads, which we're trying to really preserve that area to keep from commercial coming in there. So, I just want to say thank you so much for all your dedication. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Approval of minutes from regular meeting, October 15th, 2024. Do I have a motion? Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I need approval of minutes for our special meeting from October 29th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mayor's report. Very busy since the last Town Council meeting, October 17th. Went to Berkeley Prep and read to their first grade class. On the 19th of October, participated in a dunk taint to help raise funds for Chief Young's bike ride for charity. Chief Young also participated. Together, we raised over $400. October 19th, I attended the Community Builders Event at the Farmers Market Pavilion. October 20th, attended the Red Ribbon Family Fest at Old Santee Canal Park. On the 24th, I attended the ribbon cutting for Your Health Primary Care. Councilman Dennis and Councilman Swetman was also in attendance. October 25th, attended and participated in a ribbon cutting for Complete Barber Shop and Salon. On the 25th, I also attended the Berkeley Middle School Fall Festival. The 26th, I attended the Fox Bank Golf Cart Parade. On the 30th, I attended the Town's Trunk or Treat Festival, and it was amazing. Several people up here have businesses that participated. We had a great crowd, great vendors, and it was an amazing event. We even had a costume contest, and it was really good. So, thank you to Susan Gilmore and all the town staff that worked so hard to put that together. November 1st and 2nd, I attended the Lions Club BBQ Cook-Off, and on Friday, we did the tasting. On Saturday, I spoke at the awards. And thank you, Councilman Dennis, for being at the event as a Lions Club member. November 5th, I was invited to St. John's Christian Academy to judge their pumpkin decorating contest. I'm going to tell you what, those kids are amazing, and the talent that they have is just outstanding. On the 7th, I visited Whitefield Elementary to read to a second grade class. However, when I got there, all the kids had their hands up in the air, and we turned it into a question and answer session. I'm going to tell you, second graders are so smart today. They are just on top of it. I really enjoyed that. November 8th, the town held a Veterans Day Lunch at Swig and Swine honoring our employees who served in the military. November 9th, I attended Drew's Annual Thanksgiving Meal Giveaway at Farmers Market Pavilion. They had many activity for the kids. Food was outstanding. This was their fifth year of giving back to the community. November 9th, I attended the Berkeley County Animal Shelter Free Adoption Event to help raise awareness for the animals that needs adoption and fostering. November 11th, I attended the Veterans Day Service at the VFW. Councilman Dennis and Councilman Law was also in attendance. I also want to thank Chief Gass and Chief Young for placing the town's wreath at the memorial. November 13th, our Recreation Department held their annual Coaches Appreciation Dinner at Berkeley High School. Councilman Dennis was also in attendance. We were also invited to attend Santee Cooper's annual Celebrate the Season reception. Unfortunately, they was both at the same time, but my wife, Carolyn, First Lady, showed up to that event and represented us well. November 14th, I attended the Berkeley County Water and Soil Conservation Banquet at Wampee. The 16th of November, I attended Monks Corner Picking in the Park. I want to thank all the staff who worked hard to put this event. Councilman Dennis was in attendance. That was a great event. I mean, our vendors did very well at that event. And then, on the 18th, I attended the VFW Awards Banquet. I was honored with a quilt of valor. It was a very touching ceremony, so thank them for that. Our future events, November 29th through December 30th, Santee Cooper will hold their Celebrate the Season Driving Lighting Tour. December 6th, the town will hold their annual Downtown Christmas Festival from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And on December 7th, the town will hold their annual Christmas Tree Parade. The parade will begin at 6:00 p.m. and go through 8:00 p.m. And on a personal note, I want to thank everybody that reached out. My sister passed away. I had a lot of people reach out and offer condolences, and I really appreciate that. So, that's the end of my report, our administrative report. Jeff?
Mayor Council, I have a few things to update you on. First of all, in front of you should be a printed copy of the recently adopted comp plan. So, that's the plan that y'all adopted a few months ago, that we are now going through the process of working on the new Unified Development Ordinance. We've solicited proposals from planning firms, and staff is reviewing those proposals now. Hopefully, we'll make a recommendation to you soon about a firm to move forward with that. We also received our fifth Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the GFOA. This is the gold standard in financial reporting. So, very, very proud of our people for doing this, particularly Justine, Marilyn, and everybody else. So, thank you all for doing that for the town and showing that we meet the highest standards of financial reporting. So, that's really good, fifth year in a row. We also have some introductions and announcements to make.
Evening, Mayor Council. I'd like to make an announcement about the Fire Department. We just promoted Corey Denny from Captain of Community Risk Reduction to Battalion Chief. And additionally, he just completed his Fire Officer Four, which was a two-week course at the Fire Academy in Columbia, and it's a nationally recognized certificate.
Also, Chief Denny is also Chair of our Safety Committee, and that's a new committee that was started in the last year to help reduce our liability cost. And their recommendations and the things that the town as a whole is doing is starting to work. We received a 5% discount in our insurance premium this year, a savings of almost $60,000. So, great work from him and everybody else involved.
Mayor and council, I want to introduce you to the newest member of the Recreation Staff. I am now fully staffed. Thank you. This is Zach Jacobs. Zach has been hired as our Athletic Director for the Town of Monks Corner. He is in his fourth week, and in four weeks, or three and a half weeks, he has done more than, I don't know, I can't even explain, but he has been a breath of fresh air. Zach was with us when I first started six years ago on our grounds crew. He comes to us from Berkeley High School. He has a baseball background. He thought he wanted to coach baseball the rest of his life, so he went on to Beaufort and tried his hand at coaching baseball and decided he wanted to get back into the recreation field. So, he's been at West Scott and North Charleston for the last two years, and we swept him away from them, and I am very blessed. I think you're going to be very pleased. His work ethic is second to none, and we are blessed to have Zach Jacobs. So, I want to present to y'all our Athletic Director, Zach Jacobs.
Chris Humphrey is our IT Tech. He just started with us last month. Chris joined us with 13 years' experience. He worked with different projects with the government agencies, the contractor also. He's very experienced in networking, hardware. He's already been doing some projects with us already. He's been done in the park, in the Unity Park, and he's been done a lot of stuff. Really happy to have him with us, and I'm looking forward to work with him.
And Mayor Council, I'd like to introduce PFC Catherine Whitstone. She's our newest hire. She came to us with over 12 years of experience in policing. She has a background in patrol, SRO, detectives, recruiting, peer support. Right now, she's our SRO down at Fox Bank. So, she's really brought a lot to the table for the agency, and I'm looking forward to her contributions to the community, too. So, welcome to the family, Catherine.
And that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
I just wanted to also point it out that the Town of Monks Corner, our Fourth of July Festival, was voted best of Berkeley, and I think that says a lot with as many festivals that go on in the Low Country that people feel that way about our festival. I know it's a lot of hard work and dedication to put that on, so that was awesome.
Mayor, since you mentioned that, I did forget to mention, we did receive a $25,000 grant from Brooklyn County ATAX. So, great job by Ms. Winters for getting that application in to support the Fourth of July Festival.
Thank you. All right. New business. There is no new business to be brought before council. Old business, there's no old business to be brought before council. Public input will be limited to three minutes per individual. We have one person today, Jody Nyers. Please step up and give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Hi, I am Jody Nyers at 112 Mulberry Crossing Lane, Monks Corner. And I'm here just to ask, and this may even be something I need to direct to the Planning and Zoning Committee, but the new development that's going in at the corner of Main Street Extension and Rembert Dennis, you know where I'm talking about there? It's all being cleared, and I even think across on our Dennis Boulevard, there's some that's part of that. Just curious from the perspective of those that live in Fair Lawn, there's been concern about whether or not the entrance, there will be an added entrance on Rembert Dennis that matches up with Edward. Do we know if that is in the plan?
Yes.
Or will it, it is?
Yes.
Is it too late to register her complaint, I guess, right?
It had to go there.
So, there's an entrance that's going to be on Main Street Extension, because that's where it looks like they're even doing the construction. So, then the other one will come out right there. I mean, can you imagine? I mean, that's going to cause a lot of bottleneck there. Do we know if that?
So, as part of the development, they had to do a traffic impact analysis.
Yep.
And the result of that analysis was that there will be an additional turn lane put in there coming out of Edward to make it easier for people in that Fair Lawn neighborhood to get out without being covered by traffic trying to get into the neighborhood.
So, the turn lane will be coming from, out of, from the development out onto?
No, out of Edward.
Out of Edward. Oh, of the new development?
No.
Of the current one?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. All right. Thank you for that. And then, the only other thing, and I think this is really a state issue, and this is resurfacing roads within the county and the town. Is that an SEDOT thing? Old Fort Road, which is the middle road within Fair Lawn, Dennis and Edward and Fair Lawn, is in dire need. And I reached out to the county over the summer, sent them videos, and they just actually sent it. It was amazing how many emails it kind of went to. Well, it's not you, it's not you, it's not you. Finally got ahold of somebody. I think his name is Danny Thrower. Not sure who he is, but he did say that it, along with, I guess, 17 miles of, you know, other roads are to be paved. Just wanted to get that in there. Thank you guys so much.
All right. Thank you. All right. Executive Session. We'll need a motion to go into the Executive Session to discuss matters concerning the proposed location, expansion, or provision of services encouraging location or expansion of businesses. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are now in Executive Session. All opposed? We are now in the executive session.
Motion to go out of executive session, back into the regular session.
Do I have a second to go out?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. There's nothing to come out of executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned.
That's all right. That was two farmers. 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 That was two farmers.